Hey Nathan, first on the agenda.
Ah, good morning. Ah, I have in your packets and I had sent this to you via email on, ah, late on Friday afternoon, the formal recommendation from Ton and Blank regarding the courthouse. I apologize, I don't actually have the amended contract yet. Ton and Blank has not provided that, but if you are ready to proceed, once we go through this, I will ask you to authorize Chuck to sign that once Ton and Blank has sent it to me. Um, final recommendation from Ton and Blank is to proceed with the Plaski County Courthouse renovation project based on the apparent low bids received on the eighth of April. Um, you have the total bid list with a couple of ad alternates, um, for a total construction budget cost. This is all of the bids and this is all of Ton and Blank's costs of nine million eight hundred ninety-nine thou- nine hundred ninety thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. And that number includes bids totaling eight million two hundred and fifty thousand and fifty-six dollars. Ad alternates requiring payment and performance bonds for two companies in three categories totaling fifteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-three. Those are not required, you don't have to accept them, but those are the two low bidders where Ton and Blank thought it would be advisable to require those bonds just because they haven't maybe worked with Ton and Blank as much and so they can't vouch for them the way they can for most of the low bidders. They all met Ton and Blank's, um, pre-qualification requirements, which are fairly rigorous and led to at least one other company not bidding at all. But those are just a couple of cases where they don't know the company well enough. And one of them, I think actually Lumina does know them very well, so I'm not concerned, but that's their recommendation. Um, they did have to add seventy-nine thousand sixty-four dollars back into one bid. What happened there is that the low bidder, who was still the low bidder even adding these money back in, ah, did not include the replacement of the louvers in the clock tower. There are two different louver projects in this project. One of them is a very small portion for the new HVAC system and the bidders didn't realize that there were two separate ones and thought it was being covered in the HVAC. That is why that seventy-nine was put back in there. Um, four hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars in construction budget contingency. And then one million one hundred and six thousand eight hundred and ten dollars in fees, insurance, bonding, and Ton and Blank's general conditions and site work, which includes the cost for their construction manager, their project engineer, whatever labor they may have for general site maintenance, that sort of thing. So like I said, nine eight nine nine four forty-six on the construction side. That leaves us with two million eight hundred fifty thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars on our side of the project budget. Um, little more than one point three two million for architect, design and engineering. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for furniture fixtures and equipment. Nineteen thousand three hundred dollars for the appraisals that were required because of the lease rental arrangement for the funding of this project. Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for bond counsel, financial advisors and underwriting. Fifteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars for environmental testing. Sixty thousand dollars for temporary office space and movers. One hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars for IT work outside of the Ton and Blank scope. So that's including setup of internet and phones over in the East Annex. A lot of oddball stuff that Ton and, ah, that Lumina at Rowing and DeGroot have done for us. Thirty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars for construction testing. One hundred thousand dollars for document digitization and five hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars in contingency on our side of the budget so that we have a total contingency on both sides of a little more than a million dollars. All of that totaling twelve million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and a number, as you can see in front of you on the report and what I sent to the email, a number of those costs on our side of the budget, I have estimated a little bit conservatively. So there may be some room to move those into contingency as some of those bills are paid to have a little bit of extra cushion. Any questions?
But there's no guarantee that on our end, it could be more though.
What do you mean?
Well, you said you gave a conservative estimate. And all these are estimates, right?
Um, most of them. Um, appraisals, that's already been paid for. Environmental testing, that's been paid for. The rest of them are estimates that are all, that all have built cushioning into. Um, for instance, architecture, design and engineering, there is a set percentage that Ton and, or that Lumina receives. I've included that and then I've included additional cushioning to cover any engineering costs beyond the scope within Lumina, that sort of thing.
So has the steering committee or the council seen these figures?
No, not, well, they've, they've, they've seen them, but they haven't had a chance to respond.
Okay. I guess just a couple of questions I have, you know, we, generally speaking, are you happy with this?
Yes, um, I would have liked to have ended up with a little bit more on the condi- on contingency. Um, we thought HVAC would come in a little bit lower based on where we were working with J and K on the revisions to the project scope. As, ah, you know, unfortunately, they did not end up submitting a bid. That said, I spoke with John Masterson, who is on the steering committee, and he thought that that was actually a reasonable number and he was guessing a little bit higher. So it would have been nice to have cut a couple more hundred thousand from HVAC. Everything else, I think, lined up pretty much where we thought it would.
So you don't have, we have like six or seven different areas where there's only one bid.
Unfortunately, that's, that's how it's been on the first bidding of this and even in a couple of bid categories on the Justice Center. Ah, and I know, for instance, that one company that was the only one to bid on both HVAC and plumbing, they were the low bidder the first time around on this project. So I'm not sure unless JK had committed pre-qualification that we would have done any better on those categories. Ah, the electrical contractor, we had two bids, they were the lowest one the last time and because of all of the work they did with Lumina and Ton and Blank in helping us to slim down the electrical scope from the first drawing to the final ones, they know the project better than anybody else. And I think those are three of the highest price tag categories, the plumbing, HVAC and electrical.
And then I guess in, ah, category number eight.
Yeah.
The two bidders.
Were way, way apart.
There's only, there's over a million dollars difference in those two bids.
The, yeah, Ton and Blank looked in that and Time Key did not bid it correctly. Um, we had a couple of alternates regarding windows. You know, the base is to repair the one, repair and replace the ones that absolutely need it and to put all new hardware on. And there was an ad alternate to replace every single window in the building. And Time Key misread the bid documents and bid replacement of every single window as the base bid instead of the alternate. So the Meyer glass was much more aligned with what we were expecting based on base bid versus alternate. And that's another company who was closely involved in helping Ton and Blank and Lumina to revise the scope. They're based in Michigan City. They did the blazing and storefront work on the Justice Center and so their bid makes sense.
Okay, and in their bid, ah, the other company, Time Key, they did include window replacement even above their one point two million.
That's where the backwards came in. They probably, um, they still would have been the high bidder, but that's where the getting it backwards in that three forty, Ton and Blank reported to me, is what their base bid would have been if they had followed the instructions correctly.
So a hundred and eighty-seven thousand is going to cover everything that needs to be done with this low bid?
Yes.
Maurice, Mike? Questions?
Well, number nine is sort of the same thing, not as big, but, ah, seventy-six thousand versus one hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Yes, that, those two categories, nine and nine A, with MTB flooring are two of the three P and P bonds that Ton and Blank recommends. Um, MTB is just a smaller, newer company. Um, I can't say for certain. My guess is that they might not be a union shop, whereas master tile might be, and so they're looking at different, um, wage and benefit packages.
This whole project's gotta be prevailing, right?
Yes and no. They, they, they have to meet, Ton and Blank has to meet a certain quota of the number of laborers who are union, but it does not have to be one hundred percent. It's, you know, they have to meet a certain baseline, but they do have some flexibility based on where the actual bids come in.
They don't have to be union, they just gotta be agents, right?
That I don't know, I can look into that. But they didn't have any concerns with the MTB bid as far as what the wages look like.
And with the contingency, isn't that normally about ten percent of the project?
So it, yes, but on our side, on our, their side, it is five percent, which is, and then the other side, it's also five percent, but it doesn't come out to ten total because of some of the costs that aren't directly related to construction. So things like the document digitization, the outside IT work, those sorts of things bring down the percentage. But as far as actual construction costs go, our contingency between the two is over ten percent.
Or you can play with numbers and make it below.
Right. And, and as I had said in the email, you know, if everything, we know, we know in a project like this, there will be surprises. But as long as we don't have that big of a surprise at any one point, we'll keep it as it is. But the document digitization is something that we're doing because of the project, but is an integral to the project. We could have just moved all those documents offsite, let them be. So we do have some room to chip away at that line item and just not reimburse the Fund one, 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 two if it's absolutely necessary to move some of that into contingency. And I think a hundred thousand dollars is gonna end up being twenty-five to fifty percent more than we actually need when it's all said and done, based on the time that we've done so far over the last couple.
What kind of warranty is it?
Um, we would have to dive into the, ah, hundreds of pages of contracts, but I mean, that's all addressed in the, ah, contract that the commissioners executed with this back in, is it early twenty-two at this point?
Probably. The board action today, what does that actually entail and?
Authorize you to execute the amended Ton and Blank contract once they get it to me. And all that is, is saying the price is going from zero dollars to nine hundred eight, nine million eight hundred ninety-nine thousand and four hundred and forty-six dollars. Everything else in the contract will remain as it's been author- ah, executed. This is just the change of the, ah, GMP.
Okay. There's still time for discussion with the council and steering committee and all that, moving forward or not to move forward with the project?
Yeah, we do have a ratings call this week. In worst case scenario, we have the ratings call and it doesn't matter. Ah, yes, I mean, at this point, the more you push it back, the more you're gonna delay con- construction. But yes, you can have that conversation with the council.
Well, now that, and the steering committee, they've been the ones that's been kind of on board, walking through with all of this work being done. You serve on that, right Maurice?
Yes.
These ratings calls, we're gonna have, ah, like standard orders, ah, rating counties' finances, to move the bond process forward, we need to make some decisions. And the, I mean, the big holdup is that we were over budget or not, so. We should get everybody that's gonna have an opinion on it together as quick as we can.
So again, Nathan, what is the action needed today?
If you are ready to proceed, I need an authorization for Chuck to execute the amended contract, changing the price from zero to that nine point eight nine million.
Hey, I would make a motion to authorize Chuck.
Amend?
Ah, amend the contract.
Second. Any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hi, unless you have any questions about this or anything else going on, that's all I have for you this morning.
Yeah, Leanne.
Good morning. My name's Leanne Wright. I am the executive director of the Community Foundation of Plaski County. Ah, this coming May and June, the Indiana Communities Institute from Ball State University will be coming to Plaski County to facilitate some community listening sessions. They will be held for five consecutive Thursdays, starting from May twenty-third and will be held in Winemac, Francisville, Star City, Midaryville and Monterey. Ah, Indiana Communities Institute will compile the information gathered at all of these events into a strategic visioning report that will be shared with you for your consideration in your work. Um, I am hoping, ah, that you will attend one or more of these sessions and encourage your constituents to also attend because we are, um, working together to envision what we would like to see Plaski County be in three, five, ten, twenty years down the road. Um, I have some information that I would like to share, if I may. So I just wanted to say, ah, thank you for your time this morning. Um, and I look, I look forward to lots of participation at these events.
Yeah, a couple of other things, if you have time.
I certainly, I have all the time in the world for you, Chuck.
You might share the, ah, partnership with White County?
Around childcare?
Mm-hmm.
Certainly, so, um, the Community Foundation of Plaski County was a recipient of a Lilly Endowment Gift Eight Planning Grant on the regional scale. Ah, we have partnered with White County Community Foundation to take a regional look at childcare, um, in our communities. Ah, we, we utilized Transform Consulting Group to do a deep dive on the data. Um, and it, it was not surprising, we have great need for, ah, childcare, particularly, ah, the age range zero to three. Um, we are in the final stages of compiling that report. And at the end of this month, um, Plaski and White Counties will be jointly applying for a competitive five million dollar grant to address, ah, regional childcare needs in our community.
And what's the timeframe on that? When do you expect results? Yes or no on?
On the, on the five million grant? Um, I, I need to double check, but I believe by fall, we will know whether or not we receive the grant.
And you normally send an update, ah, to me and so on, or other endeavors? You wanna quickly share anything on those?
Sure, um, so.
They put you on the spot.
(laugh) Um, so, ah, again, ah, Plaski County was the recipient of a planning grant through the Lilly Endowment, specifically to our county. Ah, and the Community Foundation has been utilizing that to address substance misuse in the community. In February, we held a community readiness assessment facilitated by IU Prevention Insights. Ah, and that was very informative and has formed a baseline, ah, for us to begin planning around how, how we can collectively, as a community, do a better job of implementing prevention strategies as well as, as supporting resources in the community for recovery and treatment. Um, as a direct result of the community readiness assessment, we now have a NARANON group that has started meeting on Thursdays, um, I believe at six PM at the United Methodist Church in Winemac. So that, that is a very good thing for our community. Um, the Recovery Cafe of Plaski County is, has been established as a 501(c)(3) and I am very happy to announce they were recently accepted into the Recovery Cafe Network. Um, Spring Cohort, they will receive two years of training and a fifty thousand dollar grant each year, ah, to, to get their program up and running. Ah, the Recovery Cafe, um, started under the umbrella of the Community Foundation and is now, um, out in the world growing. Um, they have informal sessions, meeting Fridays from five PM to six PM at one two seven East Pearl Street to talk about, um, building a recovery community where all are welcome and included, um, to, to explore how, how to strengthen their recovery journey.
And that's the old Community Foundation building in case?
Yes, sir, it is my old office.
So the, um, next topic I wanted to, or another topic I want to ask about is, um, I want to take a moment and say thank you for your help with the grant and, um, getting the Plaski County Community Navigator going. Ah, just wanted to take a minute to say thanks for that. And, um, wanted to, ah, ask about that. When we look at the numbers, it looks like that has been extremely successful and, ah, quite a need. Would you care to elaborate on that a little or?
Certainly, um, so community navigators, um, are a growing field in our state and they help provide wraparound services, I think is the technical term, um, to help people get connected to recovery, treatment, housing, food, ah, whatever services that individual might need. Ah, and so what we've been seeing in the numbers with our current community navigator is that, oh my goodness, we, we have such need for that position. Um, between March and December of twenty twenty-three, our community navigator assisted over six hundred individuals. Um, that's, that's a lot of people. Um, currently, um, she, the role was originated by a Community Foundation grant. And then thank you to commissioners for opting into SB four and also allowing us to apply for the matching opioid grant at that time. The matching opioid grant is now covering the, the cost of the community navigator. That grant will end in June twenty twenty-five. I am working with our court system and other community partners to figure out how we might be able to make that a permanent position because the numbers clearly indicate that, ah, Plaski County has need for a community navigator. So we're working to figure out how to make that permanent rather than grant funded.
And I would also say that, ah, I have heard, um, that you have the right person in that position because, um, she is really passionate about the job that she's doing and very open to people.
Yes, sir.
That sounds like, um, a good choice that Judge Coker self-made hiring.
Nothing to do with me, that was all Judge Coker and we are, we are very fortunate to have the community navigator that we have.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And is today the first day for our school liaison?
Yes, sir. Our, our school liaison coordinator starts today. Um, sh- she is, um, onboarding with our two school systems. I am working with IU Prevention Insights to do some comprehensive training to get her certified as a prevention coordinator as well as develop a curriculum of evidence-based prevention work, um, that can be utilized within the school systems with direction from the school superintendents.
Okay, very good for the impromptu question.
Did I pass? (laugh)
That's not for us to decide.
(laugh) Okay.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You are having an open house?
Oh, yes, um, tomorrow evening, the Community Foundation will be hosting an open house from five to seven PM with a ribbon cutting ceremony at five thirty at our new office space at two two one North Monticello Street. And we would be delighted to have you and any, anyone else who is available to come, ah, check out our new office space.
Um, I would go back to your original topic, these listening sessions. Um, I feel that you have, um, made decisions based on these because, um, I seen what was important to the community. What was that, six years or so ago, five years or so ago, when, ah, you'd originally did those? And that's how decisions are being made now, based on what the community and the county wanted?
Yes, sir, yeah, it's, um, it just makes good sense to listen what, to what the community wants and desires, ah, as the Community Foundation shapes our strategic priorities moving forward, so. Mm-hmm.
Thanks again, Leanne.
Thank you, thank you all.
Autumn?
Good morning, I'm Autumn with the Soil and Water Conservation District. Um, I just wanted to give you a couple of updates on what we've been doing and a couple of events that we have coming up. So, April sixth, we had our annual, ah, tree sale. Um, we sold red bud, Downy Service Berry, Arbor Viti, black walnut, blue spruce, pipe. Um, it was a very successful event. Um, we had all of our orders sold out. I believe it was the following Tuesday, something we do every year. And we have our order sent out beginning of the year. Um, and then we do our annual Women's Learning Circle. Ah, we partner with the Women's for the Land and they, ah, they educate, um, women landowners who, you know, their husbands are the main landowners. And, ah, after they've passed away, the women are the ones that are left to take care of the land. Oftentimes, they don't know. So that's where we partner with Women for the Land and educate them, conservation practices, how to help them along that process. Um, we just had our learning circle on April eleventh. Um, we had a total of nine attendees and Brienne Lowe, ah, who is our state biologist, um, was the one who led that conversation. Ah, it's some, it's a little something like this, you know, it's, it's very casual, it's very welcoming. We try to make the environment feel comfortable. Um, so it's not like a, a PowerPoint and talk at you. It's, it's very much like this setting about practicing their concerns and their questions. Um, and then we also talk about, um, sorry, I'm moving on to my next one. Envirothon, um, Envirothon is a regional and state thing that we have, ah, every year. So, let's see, um, the north, north, ah, north northwest region is, um, part of, we, Plaski is part of that. Um, we educate high schools, that's, that's what that program is, sorry. Um, trying to figure out how to explain this. So, sorry, I'm losing my tongue now. High school students from surrounding counties are the ones who come. Um, they're, they're, they come in teams and, ah, this one was just hosted in Buffalo. Um, they're, they're, they come in teams, and, uh, this one was just hosted in Buffalo, uh, Camp Buffalo. Um, we had a total of seven schools and six teams. Uh, two teams from Knox are going to state. Um, and the RCND, north, 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 northwest region is the one hosting it at Lafayette and the Beck Center. Um, we are expecting close to around 300 students to attend. Um, and it is something that Plaski County and surrounding counties are very proud to be a part of. Um, I'm currently working on getting a few sponsors to help with the food. Um, any questions so far? I feel like I'm moving along pretty fast.
Yes, I, I want to go back. Did you say that was Women for the Land?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So Soil and Water partners with Women for the Land to help put that on, yes. Okay. Okay, and then, was there any more questions? All right. Um, RCND rafting, so every year, um, our RCND group, that, um, it includes nine counties. Uh, Miami County, uh, Fulton County, not, not, um, Stark County, I'm sorry, White County, and several others. We all, um, get together and the schools within those counties apply to go to this rafting. It's a five-day event. Um, here in Winemac, they all come to the Tippy Canoe River State Park. And, um, we have teachers and, uh, DNR, um, what do you, what do you call my mom? But they come and educate the, the high school students who, who come and, uh, they go talk about forestry, they talk about watersheds, and then we have them do a couple of tests on what they learned. And then we get on the river and, um, and rafts. And they do on-the-river testing and a little history. Um, on-the-river testing is phosphates, um, how much oxygen is in the water, and they also do macro invertebrates. So they'll get out of the rafts and they'll shuffle their feet with, um, some nets, and they'll try to find some macro vertebrates through that. Um, it's very interesting to watch. Some of the kids don't want to get their feet wet, don't want to get out of the raft. Um, and then when they get back on the raft, you know, it's fun time, they do splash and have a lot of fun. And, uh, then after that, we do talk about otters, uh, river mussels, and, um, what's the last one? Can't remember the last one, but it's all pretty fun. Um, we had quite a bit of students that wanted to say they, they wanted to come back again next year. Um, a lot of them did really, really well, and we're really, really proud of our students. Uh, we had a turnout this year, last year, I'm sorry, of 250 students, which was 16 schools. Um, this year, we are expecting right around the same number. Um, our dates for this year are September 4th, 5th, 10th, 11th, and 12th. Um, I also wanted to mention that the National RCND came to our, um, RCND rafting last year, and they brought their media team and they, uh, made a video of, of the whole thing. So if you want to go to our Facebook page, you can find that and, and have a better explanation of what that's all about.
Any questions? Autumn?
Sounds like you have lots of exciting things to happen.
We are very, very excited for this.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks, Autumn.
Patrick here? Okay, we're down to, uh, approval and signing of the claims. Payroll number eight, and a Reese Riley check.
Okay. Excuse me. I've looked at the claims, uh, looked at payroll number eight, and the Reese Riley.
That's for the aviation.
Aviation department. Department that we withheld. Okay. All right, so make a motion to approve all three of those, claims, payroll eight, and Reese Riley.
Sure.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You have the minutes of the April 1st meeting?
Hey, I've reviewed those minutes and I make a motion to approve as written.
Moved and seconded. Other discussion on the minutes? Favor say aye?
Aye.
And we have a conference request from, uh, Edwina Guffey. Attend the spring conference held on April 24th through the 25th, act exemption. IEHAA, uh, conference, spring conference.
I would make a motion to approve Edwina's request for the conference.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Gary, you have an update on our, uh, equipment that was in Fulton County that we tabled the other evening?
Well, yes, the truck, feathered, back here, county highway. Mister, don't believe the truck would be of use to the highway department. And my attention, possibly put it on gov deals, sell it. Or it does have the title. That was okay to put on gov deals and sell it.
Was that title sheriff's department, right?
Yes.
So any other discussion on that? Does it sound like a plan to move forward with?
We'll, we'll pull it out front. Might want to wait maybe until after election. I'm not, probably not going to be a big issue, but I go ahead and put it out there and get it listed. Then the only other thing that I did not get on the agenda and we just received last Thursday, it was awarded, uh, $1,320,000. Five for crossing. Place in a bridge, we have two and a half.
Great. Uh, Gary, what about the two trailers?
Two trailers there are possibly out at Olson's, maybe, or some other department want to look at them.
So that's, that's a bonus that we didn't know it had.
Before, when we took everything, it went out. Jeff was sheriff, he needed to clean up our lot. Whatever didn't have a title, we out走了.
Do we need a motion to sell the truck? Cause Mike made one. We need a motion. I would second that. Uh, for the truck. Yeah, cause we didn't follow through with it.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, motion and second, yes, on the sale of the truck. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Hey, Gary, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one other thing that, we mentioned this at the, uh, I think the joint session that, uh, that, uh, Ricky and I had met with the, or Jenny and I had met with the Epic people, and talked about our insurance plans for the coming year. I think I mentioned that, uh, plan on doing our testing once again. And I think company wants more of an official, uh, commitment to that. So the, uh, it's a comprehensive screening, just to give you an update again on that, $30. If our employees want additional screening, then they can, they can pay for it. But, um, I think at the meeting, we talked about that was a good thing for our employees to have available to them. But we'd like to go back to Epic and say, yes, it was approved by the, by the commissioners. Like a motion to approve that.
Still moving.
Okay. Any other discussion? Favor say aye?
Aye.
Anything else from the commissioners? Kevin have anything?
No.
Laura? Any community comments? Asked for a motion to adjourn. Being adjourned. Thank you.